Okay, I'd like to call the Human Services Committee to order. Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Tamian?
Here.
Commissioner Heideman?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greatop?
Here.
Commissioner Baum?
Here.
Are there any additions or deletions or changes to the Human Services?
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
I move the approval.
I thought if we did the pledge at first.
All right, that's good.
I read it.
I would move the approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is a closed session that we're going to have with the County Civil Council.
I move that we go into closed session to discuss legal opinion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, now I'd like to ask if there are any citizens here tonight that wish to address the Human Services Committee. Anyone? Okay, next we have updates. Are there any updates? I don't see our administrator, but I'm gonna assume there are none.
No.
Any conceptual initiatives? We have no old business under new business. The first item that we have is the supportive visitation agreement with the Professional Counseling Center, and this is for final action.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt the supportive visitation agreement Professional Counseling Center and make that for final action.
Support. So, will we need a roll call vote on this?
Yes, it's money.
Mr. Clerk? Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing? Not there.
He's absent.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Baum?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamian?
Yes.
I'm sorry, it wasn't in here for the discussion. There was, I believe in that agreement, a unit cost of thirty-some dollars per unit. Am I correct on that?
What are you talking about?
Uh, we're on.
Howard, you were gone, so.
Okay. I was just, you know, I was thinking maybe per hour.
We're on item B. We're on item B, Carl.
Don't worry about it. I think what we can say is that this is a grant with no match from the County General Fund, but that works. Is there any other discussion? Did we?
Yeah, we already did that.
Okay, all those, I guess we, do we need a?
No, we already did that, item B.
Roll call vote.
Excellent.
That's what I was talking about. Oh, yeah, no. So, this item is also for final action tonight. Someone here to make that motion?
So moved.
Support. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please. Mr. Greatop?
Yes.
Mr. Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baum?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Tamian?
Yes.
The third and last new business item we have is the Region 10 Prepaid Inpatient Health Plan Substance Use Disorder Policy Oversight Board Appointment. We have a recommended individual before us, and so we're looking for a motion to send this on to the full board meeting.
And make the motion.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any other human service matters to come before the board? Mr. Cuthem, while you were out of the room, we covered updates and conceptual initiatives that were any from the staff, were there?
No, there were.
So, there are no other human service matters. For information only, we have the Health Department October Points of Interest. We receive and file those.
Make a motion, we receive and file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to?
I move that we receive packets regarding the Human Services Matters.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move we go into recess.
Order.
All in favor?
Thank you.
I'd like to call together the Judiciary and Public Safety Committee meeting of the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners. The clerk will take the roll, please.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamian?
Here.
Commissioner Heideman?
Here.
Commissioner Baum?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing? Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Under additions and deletions to the agenda, we would like to make 7H, I'm sorry, yes, 7H Trinity Service Group Commissary Agreement for Final Action tonight, gentlemen. The existing contract is up December 31st, and there are a lot of things that need to take place before we can actually make that transition, so if somebody would help me out with that, I would appreciate it.
Make that motion.
Motion to amend for final action, aye?
Yep. Okay, I have a motion and support to amend for final action, item 7H. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Citizens to be heard. Anybody in the audience who would like to address the Judiciary and Public Safety Committee tonight? Seeing none, any updates from commissioners? No conceptual initiatives, no old business under new business, item 7A, the RSAT Grant Agreement?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that that agreement be sent on to the full board meeting.
Support. Okay, any discussion on that one? I believe there is a match, but I believe it's covered in the, in the budget.
Chairman's here, I don't know if he wants to say anything else.
Anybody from the Sheriff's Office want to talk about that? This is something we do on a pretty regular basis. Anybody need any clarification on anything or questions? All right, all in favor of sending it on to the full board?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Motion carries. Item 7B is the Fiscal Year 2016 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program subcontract Blue Water DRP.
I move that that agreement be sent on to the full board.
Support.
A motion to support, any discussion? I have one question, maybe somebody can help me with DRP. What does DRP? Anybody? Mike?
Yes, so the DRP is the drug testing facility in the health court. Folks use, it's DRP's name.
Drug resistance, drug program?
Yeah, it's a facility right over here, right by the building.
Drug resistance program.
That's kind of what I was.
It sounds good, I like that.
Kind of what I was thinking.
It's gonna be good enough for tonight.
All right, it works for tonight. All right, very good. Any other questions on this one? Hearing none, all in favor of sending it on to the full board?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Item 7C, Fiscal Year 2016 Mental Health Court, mental, I'm sorry, Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program Letter of Agreement with Community Mental Health.
I move that this item be sent on to the full board.
Support. Okay, a motion to support, any discussion or questions? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor of sending it on to the full board?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item D is a law enforcement service agreement with East China Township. This is kind of a renewal, East China Township and China Township split, one car, 12 hours a day, that car moves between both those two communities on a kind of as-want-as-needed basis, and this is the renewal for one of those townships.
Make the motion, we send to the full board.
Second.
Motion and support, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item 7E, 2016 Traffic Enforcement Program Grant.
I move that this grant be sent on to the full board.
Support. Okay, I have a motion and support, any questions on the traffic enforcement grant? Looks like it has gone up a little bit this year, looks like it might be down just a tad, but it has moved up in time. Question?
As I understand it, there's no local match.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of sending it on to the full board?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. 2016 Underage Drinking Enforcement Grant Application.
So moved.
Motion to send it on to the full board and to support. This is a federal grant with no match required, looks like in the neighborhood of $12,500. Questions? None, all in favor of sending it on?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're getting down to the nitty-gritty now. This is Jail Management System Software Dynamic Imaging, this is item 7G.
I move that this agreement be sent on, the, I guess this would be a contract for purchase of the software, be sent on to the full board.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion to support. Captain Bliss, would you like to fill us in, please, a little bit on this software? This is something new to the jail, it's replacing the software that we are using, which was dated back to, was it 48, 1948?
Yeah, he's been bugging us a while.
Take it easy on me, buddy.
No, actually, and Tiffany, for her, she's here too, so she can correct me if I speak out on this, but this current software was developed in 80, early 80s, the county bought it in 1988, as I understand it. It's had some modifications, but no major overhauls or anything else. I think all of us, if we remember back to the days when we went to school and learned computers, you learned it on a black screen with little green letters or orange monochrome letters, well, that's kind of what we've been looking at for all these years, so.
Let me jump in for just a second. I want to jump in for a second and tell you that I have been over there, and I have actually seen the green screen monitor that he's talking about that they are using.
And it is quite cumbersome, because you can't generate a whole lot of reports out of it, you can't research things without going in and out probably six to eight times in things, so it's very cumbersome. And if you think about it, the jail in itself is probably the biggest pot of intel that we have in criminal justice system or in law enforcement, and a lot of that information we can't readily put our hands on, we can if we do it manually, but we can't do it electronically with a couple clicks of some, you know, web browsing dropdown and be able to create some reports and gather the information without doing it by hand. So not only will it benefit us within the jail to make our duties and jobs and so forth more efficient, but it'll also help the other areas of courts and especially in law enforcement in terms of being able to get that information.
Will this tie in in any way to the Clemis piece at all, or is this gonna be a standalone piece?
No, in terms of the pre-booking, we've talked to them, no.
No?
Yeah.
It ties in the mugshot system?
Ties in the mugshot, so it would be able to import money or out of money, that's it, information from there.
So that piece of the Clemis will slide in there?
Yes.
Okay, just the mugshot, okay. Any other questions for Captain Bliss on this program? Carl?
How did we, Tom, how did we choose this?
This one for, I've been up here, next month will be five years, through that time that we've been chasing this, and it was being chased for several years prior to that. Back in, I want to say, was it 2012, we did an RFP, and back at that time, we were looking to do the central aided dispatch system, the records management system, the jail management system altogether as one package, and was just way too costly at the time, especially with the budget situations we had here in the county. So we looked at, so we've looked at, one, two, three, I think we looked at four, four different systems at that point, which all had jail management systems. Over the last year or so, we've looked at this system, which is actually through dynamic imaging, but it's actually Core XRM is the, is the system that we're using, we're proposing to use. We've also looked at Arconics, which is another web-based system. We've also looked at the component that Clemis has, which really didn't measure up at all, and they've had some major league problems with that. And there's a Jammin' system that's been out there forever, some of their surrounding counties use, but it's not as, anywhere near as efficient as this. And for the costs that we have, most, if not all, of those other companies were more costly than this one is.
And that cost is about $113,000, including $18,000 licensing fee, and then $26,800 in a maintenance fee per year.
Service maintenance fee, correct.
Following that, so. Tiffany, is there anything else that you want to throw in there that Captain Bliss hasn't mentioned, or does anybody have any questions directly for Tiffany that she might help us with?
You know, I just asked one, and maybe it goes to Carrie, because Carrie had sent this letter up to us about 25,000 from Trinity Services. Who's, what's Trinity Services?
Actually, the next item on your agenda.
Okay.
To include its integration and technology funds that are coming from the commissary.
Okay.
Any other questions for Captain or myself? All in favor of sending it on to the full board, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Captain, stay right there, we've got another one for you.
Well, if I could, on behalf of the men and women of Corrections Division of the jail and St. Clair County Sheriff's Office, we deeply, deeply appreciate this, thank you.
Well, we moved pretty quick here, we did that in what, seven years, you said?
I think so, I think so.
All right, item 7H is the Trinity Service Group Commissary Agreement, this is for final action, gentlemen, so if you'd like to make a motion of some sorts?
I would so move.
Support? I have a motion and support. All right, Captain Bliss, and you have the vendor from Trinity here?
I have the regional sales director, Mr. Dave Chalkos is here, if there's any questions in terms of.
Why don't you give us the lowdown on this, and then we'll see if we have more questions?
Well, the lowdown on this is, what's being brought to the table here is a wealth of modern technology that we can input into the jail, which will make it easier work on the officers and so forth. Currently, right now, with our commissary system, it's a bubble sheet coloring little dots, it's fed through a system, they handpick things, and they gotta get it back out, and we get our commissary that way. With this, we're gonna bring in kiosks, it's gonna do a number of things for us, we're gonna have a front lobby kiosk, which we do money intake, so our finance people at the sheriff's office no longer will have to handle money, take it out of a box, account it, double-check it, and so forth, to do their deposits, this will all be taken care of through them and through electronically. Same thing in the booking area, the deputies no longer will have to take money, count money, have sergeant count the money, then our fiscal people take the money and count it, and we do these things that'll all take it in through these kiosks, and banking taken care of electronically, their banking software. We're also gonna place kiosks in a tablet form, in a lot of the pods, on this tablet form, the inmates will be able to order their commissary, they will be able to do electronic grievances, they will be able to, once the JMS system's in place, look up their information, such as if they've got a bond amount, things of that sort that we allow them to have, we can put the handbook on there, the pre-information, all the ICE information, if, I know a few of you have taken tours of the jail, you've seen all the ICE information we have to post everywhere, we can put that on there, it's just, it's unlimited, they have the ability to purchase other items off of that, in terms of movies, if we like, books to read, games, anything I'm missing, David, feel free to jump in anytime. These type of things, which are all revenue generating. All this equipment is coming in, the only price or cost that we have to the county is running three CAT5 lines, currently, one to booking, one to our two lockdown areas. When they come in, they will do the secured Wi-Fi system in there that these tablets will work off of, and paid upfront there. It's a 43% commission rate that we get off our commissary account. They're also gonna bring to us what they call a chuck wagon, it's a mobile commissary, if you will, with even hot items on it that they can purchase off of that, and we will get 10% of that, and a year from now, we will sit down and look at the revenues that have been generated through some of these other items that they can purchase off the tablet, and we'll negotiate a commission rate out of that. But as it stands now, they using that to pay off their costs for installation.
Tom, who's gonna run the chuck wagons, who's gonna push that around?
Trinity, good boys, same ones that do the commissary.
So, Tom, first, the commission revenues will go to pay for the cost, and then we'll actually experience net revenue?
No, we will experience our 43% off our commissary account stuff, the chips.
The sale.
IG items, everything, we get that from Jump Street, but the books, games, things of that sort that they can order off and use off and utilize off the tablet is what's gonna pay for the cost of the installation.
So, you're anticipating a net revenue increase with this?
Yes. Yeah, I believe, I believe we got a net run right now of around $400, $420,000. We expect more than that. Thank you. Now, I understand too, that that's, that goes to inmate welfare fund, but we're allowed to pay for a lot of things off the inmate's stuff that directly related to inmates, out of that, which we can pull out of the general fund.
Any more questions? Mr. Clerk, would you take the roll then, please? We have the motion for final action.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Baum?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamian?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
All right, that will go on. Thank you, Trinity, for coming out, Tiffany for your input, and Captain, would anybody object if we jumped from 7I and did 7J so that the captain can finish up before he gets out of here? Is that allowed to jump out of order like that?
May it happen.
All right, 7J, we're gonna skip by for a minute, the advanced care pharmaceutical, or pharmacy contract of addendum.
I would so move, Mr. Chair.
Support. Okay, moved and supported, go on to the full board. Captain, would you give us a quick, down and dirty on this one?
Quick and down and dirty, the contract in the past has been, I believe, 100, 200 to $210,000 not to exceed amount, it's been increased to $300,000 this year, and that's due to budgets being blown out of proportion by the rise in the cost of pharmaceuticals. Your inhalers, for example, have gone up a tremendous amount, and there's a number of other drugs that are specific to certain things, that the cost has gone skyrocketing out, and so we're forced to, as you know, we gotta take care of the medical costs in there, and so as those go up, we haven't got a whole lot of choice in a lot of these things.
If I could add in just a piece of clarification, in that memo from Deana Alder dice there on the second line where it says not to exceed an amount $200,000 to $300,000, that's a little confusing, I read that as kind of ambiguous, and when I talked to the captain about it, we both were in the same boat, if you read it very carefully, I'm just not sure it's worded right, it should say up to $300,000, so what we're really doing is moving it from $200,000 in the past up to $300,000 in an amount not to exceed.
I have a question for you. Community mental health, we still work with them pretty closely on some of the other meds.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I remember when, you know, first got on the board, we didn't have, you know, I don't wanna call relationship with them, but we weren't using them for the drug program and a lot of the psychotropic stuff and, you know, those types of things, man, our bills were way big.
Yeah, like I say, it's insulin, the HIV, your HIV drugs are extremely costly, that could be up to $3,000 a month, single patient. There's also, like I said, there's inhalers, insulin costs, I mean, there's a lot of things. In fact, what I'm scared to death of is if we're gonna have to see in there, we're gonna be in big trouble.
Howard, we've talked about this before, when you have these inmates, they're not, you can't, you can't bill any of the state services back for them at all for any drugs, okay?
No, no, not this time, not the way the legislature is, legislation is.
And for some commissioners that may not know, and for the public that may not know, once we take them in and they're in our house, they become our responsibility when it comes to medications and medical care and things of that nature, so it becomes very difficult sometimes to control all this sort of stuff, so, but once they're in, they're ours, and we have not been able to find a way to get the government to step up their. Now, what if they have hospitalization insurance?
We can bill that.
Okay.
Yeah, if they have insurance, we can bill insurance, and if it's pre-existing, and Concierge Corrections, if you remember the contract we had, they're part of their duties is if it's a pre-existing injury or a pre-existing condition, that they can go back and recruit some of those funds.
Okay. Commissioner Heideman?
What about those incarceries that are on Medicare or Medicaid? Can we bill that out?
Some of the, and I always get the two confused.
Medicare is for those of us that are over 60.
Medicare's for Howard and me.
Yeah, Medicaid, they can, they can bill some of that.
Medicaid?
But most of those services are suspended while they're in jail, just like SSI is, or any of those other services that government does, they figure they throw it on you, you got them, you pay for it till they come back out, we'll pick it back up.
Another question. Just out of curiosity, how much have you put in your budget for the jail for medical expenses? A million?
Yeah, right around, I was gonna guess, I was gonna wait for Carrie, but it's usually right around a million.
Probably a million between doctors and pharmaceuticals.
And the industry standard, you run generally between 10% to 15% of your jail budget is medical costs.
Any other questions?
If I could just throw in a comment, before the meeting, I spent a few minutes talking with our purchasing department about Medicare issues and this particular problem with their costs going up, and this goes to the question that you asked, Commissioner Heideman, the firm that the jail did hire to assist them in trying to recover costs from the federal government, we just had a bill come across, Deana advised me just in the last couple of days, $30,000 bill for a medical procedure, it was all Medicaid eligible, and as a result, the federal government is stepping up and they're covering it, so there is a big effort on the part of both the sheriff's office, the consultant they've hired, as well as Mercy Hospital, I'm sorry, it's not Mercy, Lake Huron.
Lake Huron Medical Center.
Medical Center, to increase our ability, get much more aggressive in trying to bill both those company, those individuals that have carriers, as well as the federal government when we're able to do it. But I can also tell you, and I'm sure Captain Bliss can tell you, medical billing is extremely, extremely complicated.
Yes, it is, yeah, it's, if it's not coded right, if it's not submitted right, I mean, there's, there's a ton of things out there, which, you know, from a personal standpoint, I wanna scratch my head every time I get one, make sure it's right.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor of sending it on to the full board?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Captain, thank you very much, I think you're excused.
Thank you very much.
For the night. Let's get back up to item 7I, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Memo of Understanding Child Care Fund Services Sub-Account.
Mr. Chair, I move that this item be sent on to the full board.
Support. I have a motion and support, discussion or questions? All in favor of sending it on to the full board?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Other judiciary and public safety matters, one thing I just wanted to mention very quickly, it wasn't too long ago that Fort Grashit opted for more police coverage from the sheriff department, they upped it by six hours per day, so the sheriff has that on his plate, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe yesterday, or Tuesday's election, Fort Grashit approved a millage for more police services, so they're going to pick up some a little bit additional. So you can begin to see that the communities around us are, either they're having more money, or they're having more issues, or whatever it is, or the public's more interested, but more police services are being contracted out there through our sheriff's department, which I think speaks highly of our sheriff's department, so. Any other judiciary and public safety matters from anybody else? I have no information, only I'll receive a motion and file.
So moved.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
I move we recess.
Support. And, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Recession. Okay, whatever. Thank you.[1789.87] Okay, whatever. Thank you. I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee, uh, meeting order. Uh, Mr. Clark, would you take the role?
Commissioner Bowman?
Here.
Commissioner Greitout?
Here.
Commissioner Tamiyan?
Here.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Rush.
We have, uh, some, uh, additions to the, uh, agenda, uh, and I would like to, uh, recommend that Resolution fifteen thirty-six, the two thousand and fifteen MLAP grant application authorization be moved forward for final action, and also that the Blue Water Riverwalk property purchase be moved forward for final action.
I'll make the motion. Support.
It has been moved and supported, uh, all in favor of approving the, uh, amended agenda.
Aye.
Question for clarification, is that Resolution seven, or two A going down to seven L?
Yes.
Alright, that will become seven L then, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any citizens, uh, to, uh, be heard regarding environmental or public Seeing none, we'll move on to updates, any updates from commissioners regarding environmental or public works matters? Seeing none, any conceptual initiatives from administration? Uh, we have no old business, we'll move to new business. Uh, the first is the purchase of the, uh, Riverwalk, uh, property purchase, uh, for the benefit of those, this is, uh, with the Atchison Ventures, and it will add about, what, two and a half acres to, uh, the, uh, area down at the end of the Riverwalk that we purchased, what, two, three years ago? And this is funded, uh, to some extent by the Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund Grant. I forgot the exact numbers though, but, um-
I move that this, uh, purchase agreement be approved in terms of final action.
Support.
Been moved and supported, any discussion?
Just a quick question for Mark. Mark, do you know how much funding in the Natural Trust Fund Grant we received on this?
Um, seventy-four percent.
That we got the full amount then?
One eighty-five is the full amount?
Yes, sir.
So seventy-four percent of one eighty-five?
Okay.
Okay.
So you want the exact dollars?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, um-
Do, do we want the exact dollars in the resolution?
It's gotta be in there, but we can figure the math out, Jake can put accordingly, so. Role call.
Role call.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitout?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Okay, the county at-large drain request for two thousand and fifteen, I noticed Drain Commissioner isn't here tonight, but-
Well, let's, uh, make sure he shows up at the next meeting, I'll move that, uh, this be sent on to the full board.
Okay, do we have a second?
Support.
It's been moved and supported.
Just so that number's consistent, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just-
It's up, uh, it's up a little bit over five-hundred thousand.
Five fourteen, yeah, I think we've been at five fifty-ish, somewhere in the past. Uh, little side note on the county at-large, we had a meeting at one of the Farm Bureau meetings, and the Drain Commissioner from Santa Lat County was actually there. Um, Santa Lat County has more drains than St. Clair County, and I think their county at-large, they only have to spend roughly a hundred and thirty thousand, um, somewhere in that neighborhood, and what he explained to me, and they have no petition projects in Santa Lat County. They've been very aggressive on cleaning drains since, I think it was nineteen eighty-six, but when you first go to clean a drain, you have to do all the engineering and all those other things that are associated with it, so it's, it's, it's expensive. Then you're able to actually go to maintenance mode once those, you know, things are engineered, so, point being is, A, we're way behind, you know, in drain cleaning, and, you know, so we're gonna get caught up, but I found it very interesting, once you do get caught up, some of the, you know, um, the, the at-large, there was relief at the alarm, at the alarm, at the at-large piece of it for the, um, drain funding, so. He was at, Bill, you were there too at that, uh-
Yes, yep, I was very impressed when I heard those kind of figures coming out of them, that they didn't have any maintenance to do, I mean, a little bit of maintenance, but no, no projects out there that were bonded.
Yeah.
Well, I, just as a comment, uh, back, oh, maybe five, six years ago, we were talking about this, and I think Drain Commissioner Riley would, uh, Wiley was showing us photos, and there was this drain with, uh, about a three or four-foot diameter cottonwood growing in the base of the drain. Well, obviously it hadn't been touched in fifty years, and so if you don't do preventative maintenance on a regular basis, at some point, you end up paying the piper, and that's basically what's happening. Anyway, uh, all in favor of sending on to the, uh, full board?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carry. Uh, the Lee Jay Treatment Agreement, uh, Matt's here, do you have any questions?
Well, this is pretty standard stuff, correct me if I'm wrong.
Similar to the previous agreement.
Yeah.
I, I would, I would move that this be sent on to the full board.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any questions at all for Matt?
This, this is the road commission's agreement with us to-
Yeah, that's correct. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carry. Uh, the Landfill Operating Service Agreement Amendment with, uh, Talaski Excavating.
Motion to send it on to the full board? Support.
Give me one second, I'm a little slow on the computer thing here. I'm assuming it's a continuation, Matt, of what we've currently had with Talaski's?
That's the next item, a contract extension, this is an amendment to the contract for this year.
Okay. I'll ask the question on the next one. I'm good, huh?
Any, no questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carry. Okay, the, uh, item E, the Landfill Operating Service Contract Extension.
I make the motion.
Support.
Been moved, supported. Uh, any discussion from commissioners, or questions for Matt?
Just one of the comments I'd like to make, um, we just had, obviously, a closed session earlier, um, you know, we, we, um, have a consultant that helps us with a lot of these different things, and Jim, when we brought him on board probably four or five years ago, he went through and looked at all of our operations at our landfill, from the Talaski contracts to the recycling programs that we were doing at the time, and from compaction of the landfill, you know, you name it, um, worked very closely with Talaski on, you know, refining some of their stuff, and I think it's, um, you know, improved, A, it improved our bottom line out at the landfill as far as what we were doing expenditures, but improved, um, you know, just everything out there, and they've been, uh, they've been a very good contractor for us, so, it's my little plug for them.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The Survey and Remontation Grant for two thousand and sixteen?
Mr. Chairman, I move that this, uh, grant be sent on to the full board.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, uh, this has been an annual thing for as long, but see, we have, uh, if any questions? Peter?
He's on the next item.
He's on the next, oh, you're, you wanna go with the, the Community Development Block Grant, okay, I'm sorry, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay. Okay, uh, the first one is the two thousand and sixteen, uh, CDBG Grant Authorized to Apply for Final Action.
Motion to send it on, no, that's for final action?
Yes.
Now I'll make a motion that, uh, that we approve the two thousand and sixteen, uh, Community Development Block Grant Authorization to Apply.
I, I believe the amount is, uh, sixty-eight thousand and nine dollars.
That, that's for the, uh, this, this is just the application to, to put in for the grant, is that correct?
Correct, at this time, we're just asking for authorization to apply, and we're planning on for applying up to three-hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
I don't believe we need, uh, so, this, this is just the application, when must the application due in?
It's due November sixteenth.
Okay, so, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, now we'll go on to the, uh, actual grant for final action. The Fair Housing Resolution.
Make the motion.
Support been made and supported, uh, okay, uh, any questions for Peter?
And that was for how much, did you say? I was on that, remind you.
There's no costs associated with the fair housing.
No cost? Okay, uh, as there's no cost associated with it, all in favor say aye for a final action?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carry. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Okay, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Appointment.
I make the motion that we send this to the full board.
Support.
And the appointment is for Steve Cooper, for Steve Cooper.
Did, first, no, Steve's expired.
No, Steve Cooper.
I, I think he's requesting reappointment.
He is, he is requesting reappointment, yes.
Sorry, talk to him, that answers my question, thank you. All in favor of sending it to the full board?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carry. The Brownfield Plan Inn on Water Street.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we send this on to the full board.
Second, I wanna talk a little bit about it too, Howard, if you don't mind.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, Bill Greitout and I have been fairly involved in this project, along with a handful of others. I'm part of the, our Blue Meets Green, I'm actually the co-chair of the Blue Meets Green, uh, group, which is essentially the group that does a lot of, uh, local planning, projects, scoring out things, uh, the Inn, or the Inn on Water, which is essentially the hotel in downtown Marine City, the significance of this from a regional perspective, if you look at hotels in the southern part of a county, of the county, we really don't have any, especially with the St. Clair and being close. So one of the things when you're trying to bring individuals in, you know, for business, so on and so forth, you get, we're literally south of the River Crab over to New Baltimore, there's nowhere to, to, to essentially put people up. So this was scored as a regional priority from a whole lot more people than myself, it just scored out, um, number two, so the MEDC's been involved in a lot of these types of things. Um, this, the, the significance of this down there, like I said, I can't underestimate it, so I, I, you know, the, the support that this board can lend is one piece of the puzzle, there's multiple steps, Strategic Federal Affairs, who is our lobbyist, who also is a lobbyist for Marine City, is working on this project, uh, Tom and Kathy Verton, the people that are behind this project, they're the ones that also own the, um, two theaters, the Snug Theater and the Riverbank down there, and, uh, I'm gonna let Bill chime in a little bit on it too.
Yeah, and it, it's been a long, um, struggle, anytime, as Jeff mentioned, when you put four or five different entities together, it becomes very convoluted, and it's difficult to figure out which one you need to do first, and that was probably one of the most difficult things we do, tried to do, and at one point, several people threw up their hands and, and wanted to walk away, and we convinced them to come back to the table one more time, and things began to fall into place. Uh, Jeff Donaldson's been working from his end on the Brownfield piece at Marine City, Tifa's been working on it, uh, the city council's been working on it, the police chief, who is the acting city manager, has been working on it, Jeff and I have been working on it, uh, Bill Coffin's been involved in doing some of this stuff, uh, Mike Hilfinger from Strategic Federal Affairs, uh, our lobbyist group is hired by them, has been working on it, uh, Robert Law is following it from that same group along with Mindy Fernandez, so there's a whole group of people in there. Envirologic, uh, Jeff Hawkins has been involved in trying to get these things done, um, and it's just been a, a whole array of things, but it is slowly and finally coming closer and closer together, they just got a grant from MDEQ, and they also got a loan from them, that loan would be repayable through some captured monies, so all of these things are starting to fall into place, I think the only thing we're waiting on now, if I'm not mistaken, is the, um, M-
MEDC.
MEDC piece of it coming in. Um, in, in our packet, and if you were to go online and look at it, on the, uh, second page there, there's actually a chart showing that the Marine City Tifa Supportive Resolution, that has been completed, it's been checked off, the St. Clair County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, that has been checked off, and that is complete. Marine City Commission is voting tonight on a resolution of support, I'm standing by with my text message, waiting for that to come in, um, and hoping that it comes in soon, I'm sure that they will do that, and then tonight, um, our presentation on the draft plan is on the table, we will complete that, assuming Marine City and we both complete that, then on the nineteenth, it goes to a public hearing, uh, we'll hold that public hearing, and then at the end of that hearing, we'll move forward and finally approve it, uh, and then, once all those dollars come together, the project should be able to get started down there.
Yeah, it's taking an obsolete building down there, which is in really bad shape, and it's got some, uh, contamination issues, to be quite honest, so it's, um, this whole, where this is going is really, um, essentially taking an eyesore out of the downtown Marine City, so.
Another perfect example, I believe, Jeff, is, it's, it's another public-private partnership that has come together, there are some public funds, there's a lot of private funds, the Vertons have offered up a million dollars of their own money, and they backed, uh, a financial loan to the tune of another million dollars, and then, everybody's kicking in a little bit from different departments, um, along the way, including Marine City and their Tifa.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none?
Jeff Donaldson has a comment he wants to make?
Well, it just crossed my attention-
Jeff, you gotta step up here.
Thank you, Commissioner Greitout, I, uh, excellent summary of where the project started, where it's been, where it's going, um, what's happening right now, down in Marine City as we speak as well, uh, but it was brought to my attention that, uh, in your staff, in the, in your packet, in my staff report, I reference a resolution that you'll be asked to adopt on, uh, at the full board meeting on the nineteenth, I'm not sure if you have that in your packet at this time, I have a draft of it, I know that, um, I know that there is a, uh, the, it's been, it's been formatted in the, in the way that you usually see resolutions formatted, I'm not sure why it wasn't in the packet this evening, and I'd be happy to share a resolution with everybody, if they have time, look at it over the next two weeks before you're asked to consider-
Yeah, if you get it, I think to Administration, they can distribute it.
On, on the nineteenth, um, but that, it'll be, it'll be a resolution adopting the plan, uh, if, barring no changes or anything that happens at the public hearing on the nineteenth.
Yeah, just get that over to Administration.
Any other questions or comments? Bill, if you wanna make your comments?
Yes, I just wanna make sure it's clear, what, what Jeff is asking the board to do today is to schedule a public hearing on the Brownfield Plan for November nineteenth, and, uh, the plan itself is included in your agenda packet, after that public hearing is held, you will then, on the nineteenth, you'll then be asked to adopt and sign the resolution, there is a document in your agenda packet, and it's really a, a notice to all the taxing jurisdictions, once you approve scheduling the public hearing on the plan, this notice to all taxing jurisdictions will be sent out, advising them of the action that's intended to be taken, as well as when the public hearing will be held, there will be no resolution until the nineteenth. We can certainly send you ahead of time a copy of the resolution, so you can become familiar with it.
Correct, thank you. No other comments or questions, for either Bill or, or Jeff or- Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carry.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, item K, Resolution fifteen thirty-four, authorizing prepayment, Birchville Township Water Supply Bonds, this is for final action.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that motion.
It's been moved, do we have a second?
I would support Commissioner Tamiyan, who happens to handle that area's motion.
Okay, it's been moved, a second, any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carry. Uh, now to Resolution, uh, fifteen thirty-six for final action, uh, this is, um, for the Lighthouse Grant Application, and, uh, the match, uh, I take it that- This is for the Lighthouse Grant Application, and, uh, the match, I take it that... Mark wants to comment on it? Give him a few seconds to get up there.
I, I just want to make sure that you have the corrected resolution today. Yesterday afternoon, when we were, I was reviewing, reviewing the resolution and the grant application with Dennis Delor, there was, uh, an error in there, and we caught the error. Heart Commission passed a resolution with the corrected information. I just want to make sure you have the same corrected information.
What are those numbers in?
What's that?
Eighty, eighty-two, five?
Eighty-two thousand, five is the total project cost. The problem is, this grant program's wording is different than the DNR, so we got tripped up on this. So, the grant from MLIP would be $55,000, and then the Friends of the Fort Rash at Life would provide the $27,500. So, there'd be no cost to the county except for administering the grant.
I would make the motion for final action.
For full. Mark, please, in second. Any other questions or discussion? Just so you know, the local match is coming from Friends of the Lighthouse, and they've been doing a fantastic job.
Yeah, I was up there for a going-away party, and actually, the other night, they had a handful of people there in the, one of the buildings. And from, you know, seeing when we first acquired it to where it's at today, it's, uh, it's made leaps and bounds.
Was that the Signal Station or the Fog Station? What do they call it?
Fog Signal.
Fog Signal Building.
Yeah.
We, we've been just incredibly fortunate with all of the different community entities stepping forward to assist us with it, in particular, the Port Herring Museum.
Howard, you and I crawled up there when it was condemned. We went up there.
Don't think we were supposed to be...
Well, don't tell anybody.
This is not a legal opinion, but I went to a wedding there this summer. It was fantastic. Everybody loved it. It was just, it was really cool.
Okay, um, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay?
Was that for final action?
Yes. We have the landfill, landfill activities reports. I would entertain a motion to receive and file the activities reports.
So, moved.
Support.
Been moved and, and, uh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have any other environmental or public works matters? Okay, we don't have any other. For information only, we have the Park and Recreation Monthly Financial Documents and a Notice Regarding the Michigan Residential Code.
Move to receive and file those two items?
Support. They have been moved in support. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carried. In train, motion to receive and file packets pertaining to environmental, public work.
It's moved.
It's been moved in second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Going to call the Ways and Means Committee meeting to order, please. Roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Tomlin?
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing? Commissioner Greitopp?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Additions, deletions, changes to the agenda?
Motion to amend or approve the agenda as presented. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Citizens be heard? Anyone wishing to address us? Moving on, updates, non-conceptual initiatives?
Wait a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Con- conceptual initiative?
Yes, I do.
All right. Sorry about that.
I have a, a request I'd like to make of the board. I've, I've heard some discussions in the community regarding the Medical Control Authority, that they may receive a petition to permit a new ambulance service in St. Clair County. Administration believes that the new permit could impact services that are now available to residents of the, of the community, and it certainly could potentially have an impact on the county's budget. I would like the board's approval to contact the Medical Control Authority to learn a little bit more about this potential petition, ensure that it is in fact coming forward. And if so, receive whatever information they may have, analyze the potential impact it may have on the county's budget, as well as the community, and then report back to the board with a set of comments or recommendations that we would be asking the board that we share with, subsequently share with the Medical Control Authority. So, if you have, if I have your petition, your, pardon me, your permission to do so, I would like to reach out to them.
I move that we proceed as recommended by the county administrator.
Support. Question, Howard?
Just a comment. You know, when I first joined the board a long time ago, you know, we were providing some funding to Tri-County, and...
Hundred ninety-three thousand, to be exact. One ninety-three.
And then we cut that in half, and then...
One twenty-five to seventy.
And it went to zero.
To zero, correct.
And the service by Tri-County has been, I think, outstanding, and we haven't had to subsidize them at all. I, I would be really concerned about having to go back with our tight budget the way it is, to have to do that again.
Agreed. We'll let the controller get some more information and bring it back to us, Administrator. All in, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Any other things?
Yep.
Old business, none? New business? Item A, the Delta Dental Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that to go to the full board.
Support.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Item B, the 2016 Pension and Retiree Healthcare Contribution Rates.
I move that this item be forwarded to the full board. Support.
I have one comment. I actually went to the retiree luncheon yesterday, spoke, yes. And, and it was actually the five times that I've been there, it was, um, the, um...
Most congenial?
Uh, yeah, yeah. I mean, it used to be the public luncheon of yours truly, but it was, I, I think we had three or four questions, and, you know, I went over some basic information, as I have in the past. And Mr. Kaufman was there, Bill, you've been to him, Tammy from HR and everybody, and it went really well. Just kind of went over the actuarials, where our numbers at, where our funding was for the pension, and where it was at for...
And I happened to, uh, Mr. Kaufman, myself, and Commissioner Rushing attended today the quarterly meeting of our retirees' healthcare over at Talmer Bank, and went over all of the figures there and where things are going. And it, it looks solid. The numbers were, um, kind of followed the market, but when we walked out of there, we had a pretty good feeling that all of the work that we have done, probably led mostly by Administration and Commissioner Bohm, over the past several years of trying to bring that thing into line, are beginning to show those results. So, I was very pleased to, to hear what Jeff had to say about the luncheon that he went to, that he didn't get beat up this particular year, and also that the report from Talmer looks, looks good. We're looking much healthier than what we did three, four, five years ago, so I think good news on that front.
You know, personally, I think it's one of those things, when we go talk to them, it's, I always say, it's probably not the information you want to hear, but at least I'm in front of you telling, telling you that. And I don't know if previous that happened, and, and I, and I truly think they, they do appreciate that. And, um, so, uh, just by, you know, how, how they react, you know, the reaction was yesterday, I, I think it's proven itself. Howard?
So, with both the pension fund and the benefit fund showing improvements, I, I can't imagine them not being pleased, you know? And that's part of just, you know, making sure they get the information. Good job.
One of the things that I did, and I got to give Carrie a lot of credit, I had her run the before-crash numbers and after the crash. I mean, in '07 to '08, we lost 35% of that value. And then we had some projections that I had her project out, you know, assuming the world didn't fall apart at that time, that a seven and a half percent are the assumptions that you use. And it's really the first time I've taken that information, you know, along with me. And I mean, we went from a hundred and, you know, eighty-three thousand, somewhere one eighty-five, down to a hundred and fifteen, I'm sorry, a hundred million, a hundred and eighty-three million. I mean, that's how substantial a hit that we took. And, you know, a lot of people say, well, the stock market's back up. Well, yeah, it is, but, you know, if you look at the seven and a half to where it's at, the valuations, I mean, there's about a $65 million discrepancy, if, you know, hence if the world didn't fall apart to where we're at today. So, if you look at those, the funding, if you took those, that money and you dumped it into the system, we would be extremely well-funded. So, to the point, I think we were doing a very good job, you know, up to that period, and nobody had the crystal ball to see that, that thing took that big a hit. So, it was, that's kind of what we talked about yesterday, and I think when you, when you see that. The other thing we talked about, um, was the Macomb County piece, but I'll let Carrie tell you that story at a later date, but... That's it. Anybody else? Uh, this is to move it on to the full board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Proposed court reorganization.
Motion to send this on to the full board.
Support.
We have our couple, two out of three newbies, right?
We have three out of three.
I think we have, with Jay, we have the whole group.
Three out of four, yeah.
All right. All right? Well, thank you. Commissioner Dunn, welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, just very briefly, the letter kind of outlined what we're looking to do, but just, uh, just a bit of background, the state of Michigan has gone to this one chief judge model, and, and as a result, Chief Judge Kelly has tasked the administrators and county clerk with collaborating and finding some innovative ways to save money, improve employee morale, provide service to the public. And we've been asked to look at, at different things in the organization. Some of the things we've identified upfront is just a giant discrepancy in our clerical staff. What we've identified is that the current structure is somewhat difficult amongst all the courts. And speaking of that, it's the district probate, family circuit, county clerk, so essentially all the clerical staff in the courthouse, minus one or two departments. So, we identified that there was significantly differing wage scales for similar work. What someone's making in my department may be seven or eight thousand dollars different than Jay's department, but they're doing similar work. We discovered that there was no real career advancement opportunities for, for the staff. To lack of succession planning on the management side, it was difficult when someone retired because there wasn't a lot of collaboration. And so, when someone retired, there was a lot of institutional knowledge lost. And frankly, a lot of the unions have been asking for reclassifications for several years. We just haven't been able to do it financially. So, what we did is, we sat down, looked at, looked at the current jobs. There's 27 different job wages and classifications throughout the courts. Sat down, and we, we pared that down to about eight. Well, not about, there's eight. And we kind of shoehorned all those different positions within those eight, eight new positions. We use comparables within our departments, then outside the departments, and we essentially creamed up with jobs that, you know, are going to have the same basic tasks, education requirements, essential, essential functions. And what it really did is, it allows the worker to experience wage growth through new wage scales, or through upward mobility, through career, career path potentials. So, it creates kind of a, kind of a hierarchy of, of our staff, allows people to, to grow their skills and build, move up, and allows wages to increase. It allows management to invest in the employee, provide training, skill development, and prevent the loss of the institutional knowledge. So, in a, in the grand scheme of things, it really is a positive aspect. It really is a big, kind of a tale to the collaborative nature that we've had. Now, as far as the funding goes, certainly something like this is going to cost some money. So, what we did is, as a collective organization, is we looked at our budgets, we found unique and innovative ways to cut costs, to make this revenue neutral. This has not cost anything. We've discovered ways to, to pay for that. And obviously, not resulting in layoffs, no one's going to be losing a job or anything like that. And again, through the collective nature of developing these jobs and, and finding some new ways to do that, we also were very collaborative in finding the savings for this. In addition to savings that we found, we, that's on top of the savings that the courts have provided for the 2016 budget. So, it is revenue neutral. It's important to, to indicate all, all departments work very hard. Again, this is a very unique undertaking, something to the likes, really has never occurred here. I've been here for quite a few years, and this is very unique, and it certainly is a great testament to our county administration, our finance department, our human resource department, and the courts as well. So, we're very proud of it, and we hope that you consider moving this on to the full board for approval.
Questions for Mike? Bill?
Carrie, I assume you are involved in this, and you've checked all the figures and everything balances out? Good, good job.
Any other questions?
One thing quick, I'd just like to add, is what is going on in the courthouse with Andrea, Jerry, myself, Mike, obviously with help from Carrie and Jen from HR? The proverbial governmental silos are being torn down. We're, we're working across departments, we're collaborating, we're talking about things, and this just naturally, in my opinion, has fallen into place because of that. We, we don't look at our departments, it's just us, and who cares? So, I mean, it's been a pleasure. Mike's been a, a big part of it. I'd like to give him a lot of credit for this, but, but it's, it's how I'd like to see government operate, frankly.
Okay. Bill?
Just a, just a quick comment. I, when, when this was revealed back in, I think probably mid-September, those folks involved met with me and shared what they had done, and all the detailed spreadsheets, and, um, Mike asked me near the end of the meeting, "Bill, you're not saying anything, and, um, you know, I'm kind of afraid of what your thoughts are." And, and I shared with them afterwards. I was actually just kind of overwhelmed with the attention to detail that all of them paid to this, the creative thought that came into it, the, the issues that have been plaguing this organization, that the unions have been harping on us for, for probably a good 10 years to address. And finally, all the stars aligned, and finally had the cast of characters in the room, characters meaning good, in a good sense, that came up with some fantastic solutions, again, extremely creative. And I've got to thank Andrea, Jennifer, Carrie, Jerry, Mike, Jay, all of you. You just did a fantastic job here, and I was very, very pleased to see how well this came together. You've just done a great job.
Mr. Greitopp?
And I, I would like to just kind of reiterate what, what Mr. Kaufman just said. When we have people that go out and do the things like you just did, it makes our job so much easier, and it takes so much pressure off of us when you guys come up with these kind of things, and we don't have to get involved in it. That's kind of, I, I think you'll see that the board up here is more intent on letting you guys solve your problems, and then tell us how you solve them, rather than, we don't want, we don't want to be those problem solvers. We don't know what you guys do over there all the time, so we, we really appreciate that. I do, anyway.
We just don't want any phone calls.
No phone calls.
Okay, um, we hit a, I think we hit a mo, did we get a motion in? Second, Jay?
You do have a motion?
Yes.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Thank you very much. Andrea? Jerry, thank you.
Item D, Resolution 1535, adopting the 80/20 cost-sharing model.
Does this resolution be sent on to the full board?
Support. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Other Ways and Means Matters? Bill?
I just got two text messages. Marine City approved the hotel project down there, so they've given their full support to it.
Okay, very good. Information only, items A through C?
Motion to receive and file information only?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Receiving file?
Motion.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Recess.
Motion.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are done.
We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel